He's under a 10-deep still, but I'll keep working on it.
A call to order the Monday, August 8th, 2022, Town Council Committee of the Whole to order at 6:32. All councilors are present. Calendar and Communications, Councilor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry. Good evening. Last Tuesday, just before the Town Council meeting, I attended National Night Out at Paquonic Plains Park hosted by the Town of Groton Police Department. And I just want to thank our Town Police Department for planning a great event with fun, food, and games for our community. This was also a great place for community members to meet and speak with members of our police department, our local fire departments, and our EMS providers. In our last Citizens and Police Committee meeting, members of the committee had expressed a desire for more of these types of events so that community members could interact with police officers in a non-emergency-related capacity. And I'd say that this was a great success for that. Officers were there playing games with the kids, having conversations with families, and available to answer questions. On top of that, we had booths filled with our own Parks and Rec and Economic Development Departments trying to get feedback from the community. And also, Community Speaks Out was there giving out vital information and resources. And as we know from their amazing presentation to us last week, they are helping people every day in their journey to recovery. So I was really impressed with the event and grateful for another successful National Night Out. Yesterday, I met with some residents on Park Place to discuss the agenda item tonight. Again, I will save my commentary for the agenda item, but I did go down there. I spoke with another resident on the phone, and I observed the roadway, the right-of-way markers, and was able to see some of the kayakers and users of the roadway parked on the road. I have received communications regarding short-term rentals, Board of Ed meetings, Groton Long Point Bridge, street sign names, Park Place, Branford Manor, Spicer Mansion, very kind thank yous from The Ark and Safe Futures, the incident at Walgreens, and a notification from a concerned resident that mine and Councilor Jones' phone numbers were wrong on the town website, which will be corrected. Thank you.
Council Board along?
Thank you. I've received some of those same communications. I did receive something from Mr. Fitzgerald regarding coastal access. Came by mail. I also had some questions that I will present at some point with a concern on Paquonic Road over by High Rock Road with a there's a crosswalk button there, but there's no sidewalk. I know the other one that was of concern was down, but it's on the city line, which is by Rainville. But just down right at the corner there, right where the old Pfizer daycare used to be in that corner section, there is buttons, but no walk. I'm not sure if that's state property or not. Let's see. I also received a concern from someone at 875 Bunnington Road. I will submit those pictures. They sent to me basically that the gutter there is got roots and trees and brush growing out of it to the point where it's when it rains, which unfortunately haven't had much rain. But when it does, it is backing up from everywhere else, everybody else's property onto their property, and they're concerned about that moving forward. So I will send that in an email because I just got it, but I will also send the pictures. Concerns about Branford, STRs, Park Place, Groton Long Point Bridge. Wednesday, I attended the Property Reuse Committee with Councilor McBride as well as Councilor Westervelt. I thought it was a very productive meeting and look forward to doing more work with that. I'm not sure if Council McBride is going to speak on this, but I think things are starting to move along where we're going to be having or pushing to have a open session here where folks can come out and look at the first draft and have some, you know, community input. So look forward to that. Went to Park Place for the fourth time. Today, I actually was able to get a ton of residents, which was great. And we can speak more about that item when we get to it, but just took some pictures again, looking at the maps. But I did get to meet, you know, Jason at, you know, the house number 11 as well as number nine. I've met with Mrs. Foley, number five, eight, as well as six. And then also there was another gentleman who's from Pearl Street that had come down and gave some feedback and thoughts as well. So it was very, very welcoming and, you know, good to hear all the different insights in that area. Oh, I also attended Branford Manor's tenant's unit, tenant's meeting where they discussed their concerns and what are the next steps still with the mold concerns, the slow process for, you know, response time on getting repairs done there. And not every resident has been definitely reached out to and had their issues addressed. That's all I have.
Thank you. I too attended the National Night Out very briefly as we had a meeting just after. So I unfortunately couldn't be there for the full thing, but when I was there, it looked like they had a very good turnout. I saw a lot of families and people having fun. So I just want to thank our police department for putting that on. I also attended a CFG meeting, Children First Groton. They have a new chair, which they're very excited about. And they look forward to coming to the council here to present on some of the things that they've done in the last year. And I also have the privilege of attending Coast Guard Day Celebration at the Coast Guard Academy. So I just want to thank the Admiral for inviting me. I attended along with Mayor Hedrick of the city. So just thank you for that. It was a great event. And, you know, I think that's all I have. Council Franco?
Sure, thanks. It's been a busy week. I also received numerous emails and communications. I attended briefly for the National Night Out over at Paquonic Plains, and it was an absolutely wonderful event, I thought. I also attended the Groton City Day, which was, had a great turnout. Lots of kids, a lot of great things going on over there. I also attended the Paquonic Bridge Fire Department Awards Ceremony and their, and pinning. And they had it here at Thrive 55, and it was a full house, and it was a very nice ceremony. I also went down to Park Place. I think this is my third time. And I was enlightened by two people who were down there that did not live on the road, but they were using the coastal access. And they gave me their input as well as I had another interesting encounter down there, which was sort of eye-opening. And but I will save some of that commentary for when we get to the agenda. Also, I want to announce that the Groton Little League will be having a movie in the park at Calvin Burrows on August 19th at 7:00 PM. They will have a memorial ceremony there for Joey Gingerella at 7:00, and then that will be followed by a movie. It'll be a youth baseball movie, and the concessions will be open. You can bring your chair or a blanket along with, I would suggest, some bug spray. And the movie in the park is being sponsored by Community Speaks Out. And they'll be talking to the kids before the movie starts and trying to, you know, get to them before somebody else does. And I'm also happy to hear that Representative Jo Courtney has earmarked $3 million for TVCCA. And maybe Council Parker can follow up on that because she is on that committee and possibly even the board. I'm not even sure. For a TVCCA childcare, a new or rebuilt childcare facility here in Groton. And I hope it it goes all the way and gets passed and signed, and we can get those, that funds and really help the people who are struggling with childcare in our community. And that's it for me for now. Thanks.
Council Parker?
I too received several communications, Park Place, as all have stated, and STRs, Branford Manor, everything that's been emailed. Everybody received the same emails. I really have no calendar and communications because I don't know if you guys realized last week I was in Virginia trying to drive back with my, dropping off my college student. So if you heard that in the background with the GPS, I apologize, but trying to come back here in a timely manner to at least be on a phone call with everyone. I was at City Day. It turned out very well. Some of us went up on the fire truck and more power to y'all. Interesting night, very fun. Yes, TVCCA did receive the money. We will be discussing that at our next meeting, which is on August 17th. And I don't know if all have realized that Deb Monahan is retiring. There was a news article about it, and she put forth a lot of effort to get this on board. And I wanted to thank TVCCA for doing all the work and, of course, Congressman Courtney. Thank you.
Council McBride?
Thank you. I too received the correspondence that everyone else has received, so I won't, for interest of time, go through any of that. I also received some emails on budget concerns that I'll bring up at a later date. And then, as Council Board along indicated, we did have a productive meeting last week on the Property Reuse Committee. We'll also be holding a meeting on 8/31, an additional meeting to get more information from the residents. And then, as she mentioned, we will be hosting on September 7th, a in-person forum discussion, whatever you want to call it. We'll be presenting information and asking for feedback. Haven't scheduled the location yet, but hopefully in this location or something similar. So that's all I have for report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also received the emails and communications from different residents and also attended the National Night Out at Paquonic Plains. It was an excellent event and a great representation by our police department and other community groups and businesses. So it was very interesting to go to. That's it.
Council Westervelt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like everyone else, I did receive tons of emails on the STR question as well as Park Place, among other things. And I wanted to agree with Council McBride and Council Board along that we had a very productive meeting with the Property Reuse Committee, and it looks like we're moving forward nicely. So that's a good job for them, or a good job to them. Thank you. That's it.
Council Baumgartner?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I also received several emails and correspondences from constituents throughout Groton. I attended various community events and nothing further to report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just also wanted to state, no matter if you're Democrat or Republican, that there is an election tomorrow. I think that's in strong communication. And if you're not aware of who's running, you can go online and you can look at a sample ballot for Democrat or Republican. There is a primary for Democrats and Republican for Treasurer and Secretary, I believe are the two. So tomorrow, don't forget, polls open up at 6:00, close at 8:00 PM. I also wanted to state on the record that there has been some polling changes since our last elections and primaries. So please look online and stay informed as to where that is. One example is the Thames River Magnet School now is reopened, and it used to be the former West Side, which was a polling station. It's back being used, and Eastern Point was being used temporarily, I guess, you know, before that. So now it's back at the, you know, Thames River Magnet, formerly known as West Side. I still call it West Side Middle School. And there's several others. So please look online and be informed, and tomorrow is a voting day.
Thank you. Onto the approval of minutes. I make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of July 26, 2022. So moved.
Second, Baumgartner?
Moved by Melinda, seconded by Baumgartner. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Cares unanimously, nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto new business. Park Place right-of-way encroachments. Page 12 in your packets.
Good evening, everybody. Greg Hanover, Director of Public Works. Just to kind of briefly recap where we left off at our June 28th Cow meeting. We, you know, talked about Park Place quite a bit. But again, this is a 33-foot wide right-of-way, so it's a very narrow right-of-way. 16-foot wide pavement. There is no cul-de-sac or any type of turnaround at the end of the road, as you all know. There are overhead utilities along the east side of the road. And, you know, I just want to reiterate again that, you know, driveway aprons, mailboxes, you know, they have to be in the right-of-way. People have to have access to their properties. They have to have driveway aprons in their, in the right-of-way. Mailboxes have to be there for the post office to deliver mail. But things such as landscaping, plantings, I mean, that's, we don't regulate that per se. The only time we really get involved is Public Works, if there's a safety issue, if there's sightlines, if it's, the growth is becoming so intense that it's impeding, you know, traffic flow or pedestrians on sidewalks, then we're getting involved. But certainly, you can go anywhere in town and see people planting flowers around their mailboxes. They grow grass in the right-of-way. They, you know, put in small shrubs and things, and that's perfectly acceptable, like I said, unless there's, you know, some safety issue or impediment. So that's kind of where we left off at the last time. Now, there were some questions brought up by some of the councilors that I do want to address. I think it was Council Westervelt to ask about an easement on the south property, south property line of number eight. We did do the research on that, and there is no easement there, no public access, no right-of-way or anything like that that goes out along the southern property line of number eight. What we did find is that prior to 1934, Lot 6 and 8 were actually one parcel. The property at that time divided into what is now number 6 and number 8. And he kept for himself number 8 Park Place. When he did that, his existing driveway kind of meandered over the property line onto Lot 6. So he kept for himself and his heirs, and only for himself is the rights to use that driveway and cross over onto Lot 6. But again, there's no public easement or access or any type of right-of-way for, across, along Lot 8. It was also asked, I believe by Council Board along, that we stake out the right-of-way line, which we did on July 18th. And it sounds like a lot of you got out there to see in the field exactly what the encroachments are, which is, which is great. And I know John provided some photos and whatnot. I do want to just note that and the Parks and Rec Director reminded me that the bushes that are planted in front of number 11 down at the end, this is the last house on the left, were actually planted by the town Parks Maintenance Division. Because prior to that, people were walking to the end of the road. They'd see some nice Adirondack chairs in that parcel's front yard, and they would just walk over and sit on private property. So we had a complaint about that, so our solution was to kind of create a bush or hedgerow to kind of tell people, hey, you can't go onto this property. It's private property. And the last thing, I believe, was the question about a turnaround at the end of the road. You know, 33 feet wide, you certainly can't get a standard cul-de-sac in there. The only thing you could possibly do, and I think it's on page 26 of your handout, we had a sketch of a, what we call a hammerhead-type turnaround. So a car could do, and a car, just meaning a small car or passenger vehicle, not, certainly not a large truck, could do a three-point turn if we utilized the driveway apron to number 11 and also paved a small 18-by-8-foot area in front of number 8 within the right-of-way. There's existing landscaping there now, so that would have to be relocated. But the sketch, and we have, we actually have computer modeling that we can do these car turns, which is what those boxes with the numbers in it indicates a car kind of comes down the road, turns to the right a little bit, turns into the driveway apron number 11, doesn't go across the right-of-way line, backs into this new paved apron, which is colored in brown on the sketch, which is additional pavement, and then can turn and go out. So that, you know, is something that would allow a car to do a three-point turn at the end of the road. But certainly not a delivery truck or any type of truck with a trailer or anything like that. So I think that's it. I don't know, John, was there anything else?
All right, thank you. Any questions from councilors? All right, seeing no questions. I'll give people a couple more minutes here. Council Board along?
Point of, kind of a inquiry-like question. When did the sign go in stating, like, "Do not block my driveway," or whatever it says there? And when was the direction and how did town staff move forward with that? That's my first question.
Would have happened right around the time the bench and coastal access sign went in. It's probably
Two years ago?
Well, benches do, or the signs went in, right before COVID, I think, wasn't it?
Yeah, right around that time, yeah, a couple of years.
Right before COVID, and I think it was the last owner on the left who, I know that's also why we put the hedges. And I think that's where the sign request came from.
So the sign request came from a previous resident?
I believe so. It's been so long, though, I can't 100% swear to it. I mean, it came from a resident, but I can't swear that for sure that that's who it was.
I mean, I think, I mean, I can't speak for the residents there, but my impression, and my impression is that, you know, the sign, they kind of didn't know, the people that are there, where it came from and how it came to be. But it also could give a false impression of, like, their views on the area, you know, that it's not as welcoming by the wording on it, when in fact, none of them that I spoke to, and if I'm misrepresenting them, I, there, I talked to all them out there, that that's not the impression that they were trying to. So if that owner's no longer there, could a couple screws be taken off and removed it?
Sure. If the neighbors don't feel it's necessary, that's fine. We also paint lines through Mystic where we get requests, where people often get their, you know, driveways blocked. We do stuff pretty regularly if ever requested.
And the other thing is, is that
If needed, then that's fine, though.
Right. And I know the coastal access sign has to be there because that's one of the big pushes around was to, like, make sure it's all labeled. But having it right in the middle doesn't really allow it to be, it's beautiful, open. When you go to take a shot coming down the road, like, it's nice scenic view of the, of the seaport with the sign and the bench directly sent in in the middle, it doesn't allow it to be utilized as comfortably versus if the bench was moved off to one side and the sign is pushed off to the side as well. It would look much more aesthetically pleasing. So I just, like I stated, I did meet with most of the residents down there. And, you know, one of the things that I don't want to get involved in is the back and forth. And, you know, I know there's one resident versus, you know, the other residents and all the things that are going on. And I do feel it's important that we hear all sides of the story. But as a counselor, my job is not to settle those differences between residents. We just can't. But my job is to represent them all equally and listen to their concerns. And I do feel everyone was very welcoming and very friendly to talk to. And that was the impression I got on the day, the days that I've gone down there. They seem to be very open with the ideas of working together. So I do think that, you know, based on that, on the shoulders there, where the markers are, cars could comfortably pull off onto the grass and you'd be out of the road almost by just maybe your driver door tires or however you pulled over. I didn't get the impression that they cared where people parked along the side down there. Obviously, the same courtesy, that's why the sign might be a little bit more, maybe a little too much, because even in my neighborhood, there's no sign that says that, but it's common sense not to block someone's driveway. And I think maybe if removing that could help the, ease the, maybe the, the view. But they, from what they told me, they're fine with people turning around in their driveway if they had to, and that they welcome folks in that area, and it's a beautiful coastal access. I, I did talk to the gentleman that just moved in at the end. He's coming in at the hot of all this stuff in the paper and all that. But my question is for the, for our, what is our plan, what is, if a person wants to build past their property onto an easement, and they go out to get a bond or whatever to get their driveway done, what is our process in the Town of Groton?
Thank you. Counselors' time is expired?
They would apply to the department for an excavation permit, which, you know, which would come with a sketch of what they want to do. Our engineers would review it. And if it was met town standards and, you know, the contractor provided the bonds and insurance, they would get that excavation permit, and they could go, you know, construct it with, you know, and we would have our inspector inspect it as it goes in.
Manager Burt?
I was just going to point out on the bench location, we, you know, we can, I'm sure we can move it to where the council would like, want it. Just pointing out, if you look at page 15, it's not a straight shot. It doesn't block from down the road because it takes that sharp right turn. It's only when you're right up there that you see it, and you step past it to take a photo, but whatever the council. We spent a lot of time thinking about it, but whatever the council would like, we can do.
Okay. Any first-time speakers? Council Parker?
I'm just trying to see where we're going with this as a council. What is our goal right here in this discussion? Because if the neighbors are okay with the area, this is not up for discussion. We're balancing it on. I'd just like to know what, what's the thought process?
Isn't there two issues, the ability to
I saw the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking.
No, I was asking in general, just to give feedback, but my time. I just want to make sure that what we're doing is not going to disturb the neighbors, the people who go down and visit. It doesn't sound like it is, and I don't think we should, me personally, I don't think we should do anything about removing anything. I think we should leave everything as is. I know there's some people who had other concerns, but that is not what's on the agenda tonight. So thank you.
Council Westervelt?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Director Hanover, for answering the questions that I had put forth. And it was actually very enlightening to hear about the hedgerow at the end of, at the end of the street there. It does make a lot of sense, the way you described it, and I appreciate your input. So thank you for looking into that stuff for me, or for us as a council. Thank you.
Thank you. Council McBride?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Council Board along?
I think it'd be helpful to include the neighbors in the discussion about the bench and the sign. I know when that was placed, it was kind of placed, and I, I think it would be helpful to include them and, you know, kind of see, maybe they wanted to stay in the middle. I didn't get that impression, but maybe off to the side and the sign moved over just opens it up. But I definitely think we should reach out to them and see, you know, their views on it before just placing a bench and a sign and not really including the whole neighborhood in its part of that process. As far as, I had back to Mr. Hanover's thing with the, so, you know, just to, because once again, our job is to look at all areas that people have brought forward fairly. The areas of the driveways, have those been bonded and rechecked and signed off? Have you checked into those documents?
We would have no documents on the existing driveways that have been there for
Some of them are newer, though.
If they're redone, I mean, we could go back and look through our records to see.
Yeah, I'd love to. I'll request that. I mean, I think it'd be great. I think as a whole, I think the town, we say that there's property, but we need to make sure, though, that we're doing our due diligence for legality reasons as well and making sure, you know, we have the written agreement. Because if someone was to get injured, one of those cobblestones in the end, that there's about a four-foot town property, do we have anything written down saying who's supposed to fix it or not fix it? I mean, we should be checking into that. Also, I looked at some other documents. Also, I looked at some other documents, you know, just Googling around and looking to see what other things. Some towns have things where no one is allowed to build any vertical structures or plantings without town approval. Do we have anything like that? Because that, the reason they have that is it's harder to remove those later. Bushes and grass, that's, that's just common sense stuff, you know, that, that stuff makes the tapestry of the neighborhood. I know that some have talked about the light post on, on, at the one house, right to the right, that is completely built with electric structure and a light post on the easement. Do we have anything for that? That's a fairly newer structure as well.
I would have to go back to see if we gave a permit for that. We don't, you know, normally have any standards or regulations for something like that. It would have to be looked at on an individual basis.
Is this something planning and zoning does, or is it something that you guys do?
No, it's, it's in the right-of-way, so it falls under public works.
You guys?
Yeah, it doesn't go into planning and zoning.
And with that, I think everybody should be treated the same. I think that the town should probably relook at that moving forward and make sure that if what's good for one in one area is good for everybody else, and how that works. We do have to keep somewhat of a handle on it. You know, it's, you know, when you looked, you said it was 33 foot, 33 feet road, 33 feet, and that's about 16 or 17 feet that are just open town space, and we should know exactly what's going on with the property. I mean, I, again, can't change the tapestry of that neighborhood and how it's been laid out. Spent a lot of time down there myself as a kid, but we do have to make sure that we're following, what is our plan when someone goes to get a document to build? What do we want as a town? And what are our guidance? Do we have anything written up? I'd like to just know that, and I think that would help move things forward to make sure that we have a document that we're kind of following long after you're gone and everybody else, because the concern is, when everyone sells their house down there, it needs to be written somewhere in the land records and things that that easement is there, and is that currently in there?
Thank you. Counselor's time has expired.
It wouldn't be in land records, no. The permits would be in our office.
Right, I guess my, may I just ask the last part of that question?
Counselor Casiri?
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to put my question to you, Mr. Mayor, to the person that made this referral. I'm just confused about what the intention of their referral was and if there was a motion in mind when they made this referral.
Counselor Westphal, would you like to answer the question?
Or if it was just for discussion.
Did you have a specific end goal with this, with this referral?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
I couldn't hear very well. I had, I had gotten various complaints from one of the residents down there about the blocking of the views that they had had by, by plantings and other things that had been erected, and so I was basically just trying to get more information to find out if, you know, where the town's responsibility or where the town's right-of-ways were, and what, how those either could be changed to lessen the impact, or, you know, basically what the structure is mainly, you know, for informational purposes, and if something were egregious, then it would be something that needed to be looked into. So that was my thought process.
So he didn't have a particular motion in mind?
I did not.
Thank you.
Okay.
I was just going to mention on the bench, a little bit of, you know, it was coming back to me on the bench itself, part of why we put it there is, as you know, you can't drop trailer wheels below that little bluff just past it, and I'd like to, I wanted to keep it so you couldn't pull a trailer, you know, because some people won't realize you can't drop the trailer there, so whatever, you know, I'm willing if anybody has any ideas, but I'm probably going to keep it somewhere where you, to make sure you can't get a trailer all the way in, so.
Right. I have a question for Director Hanover. How common is this sort of dead end of a road where there's no turnaround, or is this relatively common in town, or is it pretty rare?
It's, I mean, there are quite a few places, especially in these older, you know, historic roads, certainly in newer roads, you know, we put in the full cul-de-sacs and all these subdivisions, but it's not completely uncommon, but it's not, they're not all over the place.
Okay, and I know specifically, I see it as, from the complaints that I had heard, was a parking issue and a turnaround issue. The turnaround, I mean, there's not, there's not enough space here. I, I'm even impressed that you were able to fit this in here at the end to get a three-point turn, and I think it's a good idea, but I do think we have to measure, you know, how much encroachment that that would have on the residents there, but in terms of the parking, how much of a problem do you think actually there is in parking? If someone, I, I've been on that road many times, I haven't seen it packed where there aren't any spots, so I don't, I don't know if it's, if it's an issue of people not knowing where to park, where they can and where they cannot, I don't know if that's a sign issue. What do you see as the problems with the parking on that road?
Well, there's no, there's no, no parking signs up there, so you're free to park, you know, on either side of the road. I mean, obviously, when you do that, you're going to have just enough room for one car to get by, so if you had a line of cars, the whole length of the road parked there, it's, it would become problematic. I've never seen it that way. Personally, I don't think there is a problem down there with the, with the parking, I don't know.
You know, it's, you know, it's just a little tougher when you see trucks on that road. What I do is if you look down the road and if, you know, I've never seen it where cars, there's been many cars, but with, if there's a truck, I just park at the end of the road and walk in, you know, just to make sure I don't end up getting trapped in there, but I've never seen too many cars in there.
Yeah, we've, we've seen guys, landscapers pulling their trailers, they'll go straight in, and they're experts, they, they back out of there like they're going forward. I don't know how they do it, but they do it, and it just seems to work.
Okay, so basically, other than this potential turnaround at the end, you don't really see any other things that we should do, per se?
Uh, no, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Any other councilors? All right, I'm seeing, oh, Counselor Westphal?
So through this whole discussion, so the town will maintain its right-of-way through, regardless of what is decided or not decided. If we do nothing, if we just move forward, the town will retain ownership of that property, and the right-of-way is the town. And so if, I mean, with parking or whatever else, there would be no encumbrances for anybody who went down there to park?
Correct.
Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have a point of clarification. I don't think the town takes care of the row there, though. We don't take care of the row.
Take care of the road?
The row, the, the...
Oh, you know, like where the grass and the hedges are?
Right-of-way, we don't take, the town doesn't take care of that.
No, we don't, we don't maintain that.
No.
We just maintain the paved portion.
Well, I just, that was my point of clarification, because he said the town will take care of...
We'll continue doing what we do with the road, you know, we do maintain the road itself, but we don't move.
Okay, I just want to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, see no further discussion. We'll move to our next order of business. Thank you, Director Hanover. On to approval of an ordinance to establish a property tax abatement for surviving spouses of fallen emergency workers. Make a motion to recommend a resolution adopting the ordinance for a tax abatement program for the surviving spouse of a police officer, firefighter, or emergency medical technician and referred to the RTM, so move.
Second, Borland?
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Borland. And I guess, Manager Burt?
Yeah, just, we just held a public hearing at the meeting, at the council meeting last week. I think during it, we had one speaker in favor and later I think someone spoke maybe against, but just a reminder of what the council changed since it went to the RTM last, if I'm remembering correctly, we added volunteers in for, we kept the civilian sub-basin workers, or you did, the, made it clear that if you marry when you're getting, when you're the, the widow, widower, that if you remarry, that's it, you can't, if you get divorced, you can't get it back, and then, what was the other one? And then 50% max for the tax abatement and a max of 3,000, so I think those were the main changes. So I, my office hasn't received any comments on it.
Any councilors? Counselor McBride?
I just have a question on the timing. Is this, when would this go into effect if it was passed? Would it be next fiscal year?
Yeah, it's, once the council approves, like, let's say you recommended approval today, and then it goes to the council meeting on September 2nd, I think it is, if I'm correct. I believe it's 45 days after that, as long as the, unless you write it into the ordinance itself to start later, but by nature, default is 45 days after you accept it or approve it, as long as the town RTM does not veto it. It will go to the, to the RTM again.
So they'll receive a tax break this fiscal year?
Well, not the one we're currently, it'd be for the next October.
Next fiscal, okay.
Yeah.
You good?
Yeah, actually, I'm just going to state that I, as I mentioned last week when we talked about the veterans and disabled, I, I'm struggling with approving items that are in a budget, that are budgetary-based during a non-budgetary cycle. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to this resolution, similar to, I wasn't opposed to the one we approved last week, but I'm opposed to doing it now because I think this is somewhat not transparent in that it's going to be put into the budget next year, and it didn't go through the normal budgetary prices, process. So I'm, I'm not opposed to this, but I am opposed to it during, during the year. I think any budgetary matter should come throughout the budget process, which we dive into great detail, and when it goes to the RTM with great detail as well, so I'm not, I'm not in support of this for that reason only. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. I would like to notate that on the norm of our counselor, council, we usually take care of legislative actions during the year, and we do not take care of, on the norm, legislative actions during a budget session, because we are hyper-focused on the budget, and there's not usually any time to bring up any other type of topics to go along with the budget. But with that being said, I think from the input that I have heard from RTM members, and I would like to make a amended motion to the ordinance.
Keep in mind, if it's a major amendment, it has to go back to public hearing.
Well, there are new...
So anything basically other than tweaking it, it'll go back to public hearing.
All right, well, then I'd like to remove the civilian firefighters from the Navy submarine base, which you said could be put in there and removed later. You had mentioned that.
It's all up to the council, but it will require going back to public hearing if you take it out.
That's not what you said when we sent this to public hearing?
That if you...
You said leave it in there, and you can take it out later.
I don't remember, you have to bring it up on record the night of, though, that you're looking at making a change.
Of what? Point of order?
What's your point of order?
I can hear a counselor beside you speaking while I am speaking.
Okay, I'll ask councilors to only speak if they have the floor.
Any changes are potential, you have to hear from the public during the public hearing, or else you have to mention it during, at the time of the public hearing. If you make a change later without having said it previous, then it has to go back.
So if a resident brought it up during the public hearing, it can be changed?
Since it was just, yes, since it came out at the public hearing, I believe it could. I'd want to double-check with Eileen, Eileen on that, though.
Because it was brought up at the public hearing?
And...
By a resident?
I'd want to check with Eileen to double-check, though, because we had that, you know, we had the STR where John Reiner as an intro to the public hearing, you know, said the intent, but we still would have, you know, to make that change, we'd have to go back, because I'd want to talk to Eileen just to confirm.
All right, so just to be clear, when we were going into the public hearing and the motion was made to keep these things intact, it was for the purpose of going to the public hearing, and with the intent of some of these things could be removed after the fact, as long as they were in during a public hearing, they can be removed after the fact. It wasn't stipulated or educated to, at least myself, and what I heard was that it would have to go back to public hearing, and I understand minor tweaks, but it's not quite how it was conveyed, or at least how I took it.
I just don't remember them saying it, but let me just check with Eileen.
Okay.
Do you want to take a break, guys, see if I can get ahold of her?
Sure, let's take a break, if you're okay with that, Mayor.
Take a five-minute break, we'll be back at 7:20.
Recording stopped.
Folks who work as a civilian and support our town and put out fires for us equally. It just doesn't make sense to me. Why exclude them? The RTM, which I highly respect and served on there, again, they're forty-something members of the town, but there's a larger community of people that aren't being represented. And I just think it should be something that's in here. I can respect the stance of councils if you don't want it there. I hundred percent support keeping it in, so I will be supporting the original motion. I could support the decrease down to two thousand, but I definitely think keeping the naval civilian folks that own homes, they have to be homeowners, so it's not just anybody who works there, which also would limit the number again. It's unfortunate to take it out, and it makes me very sad to see it go, honestly. I also can agree with Council McBride, and my question is for the town manager, you know, why do we not follow that process and make sure that we just wait? I mean, we could draft something up, but maybe we should be doing it within our budgetary year.
Usually we'll have multiple items that could fall into the budget, actually, many, many. The council has always directed staff to do it in between. That's always been the direction to staff.
Precedent.
I think it'd be hard to add multiple. I think one would be by your max, so like, I don't think you can handle, with our, where our process is, I don't think we can fit it in.
I think, I think we could, and just because precedent doesn't mean it should be, and we haven't been asked as a whole council how we'd like to run that, at least I haven't been asked. I think we could start this earlier in the year before we kick into the budget, and that would be a good way to kind of look at these things. So, I don't know, maybe we should look at that moving forward, but I think we should try to be more fiscally responsible and not move items that aren't urgent in a non-budgetary time, and I could agree with Council McBride on that. Again, sad to see the Navy civilians that support our community go, and if I do not vote for this, it's not that I do not support the fallen, but I cannot support it written if we're not going to include the people who support our naval base. Thank you.
Just to mention, we actually started budgeting in about two more months. We start some of the preliminary stuff. Like, if we were actually having a meeting, so it's just no way. It would have to be in the next couple of months anyways, so this is really leading into the budget cycle.
Council of Home Gardener?
Yes, I have a question for the proponent of the amendment, Council Franco.
What's your question?
What's, what's the logic for removing the submarine firefighters and, and if I heard it correctly, the civilian police officers?
I believe she spoke to her motion, if I'm correct. You can correct me, Council Franco. She believes that one of the reasons the original ordinance was vetoed was because they were included, and she's trying to not have it be vetoed again. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you speak a little louder?
That's correct. Okay, thank you. From what I understand, she believes that one of the reasons this got vetoed originally was because they were included in the original ordinance, and she believes if we include it again, it'll just get vetoed again. She wants the ordinance to be passed, so she's gonna take it out in order to get the rest of the ordinance passed.
All right, I understand, but again, I, I think that argument can be applied to any other first responder in our community, though. I mean, that, or the sub-base firefighters and police officers, as Council Bordelon stated, don't they respond to, you know, mutual aid requests in our community? Should a catastrophic event take place in our community where, you know, one of our first responders dies in the line of duty, shouldn't that ordinance also apply to those individuals, especially considering that they do serve our community? And if it was, if I understand it correctly, the ordinance was drafted in a way that it would include all first responders that work within Groton, based off of how the ordinance was amended. So I, the question still stands to the proponent of the legislation. What is the true intention for removing this language?
Asked, it's been asked and answered.
But I understand that, Mayor Melendez, but specifically, the question is posed to Mayor, Council Franco, because, again, we've deliberated on this item multiple times. It's been amended multiple times, and it, it has had significant support from the council, and so it would, it kind of confuses me, or disappoints me, to say the least, that, you know, the proponent of this amendment, which would take away language that he, you know, several members of this council has supported. And, you know, it, my support for this, you know, for this proposed ordinance was contingent on ensuring that that language would be included, and so wouldn't it behoove our council to move forward with the document that already has broad-based support within our council? We've already heard the concerns from the RTM. We've had public hearings on this, and I didn't hear anyone speak at our public hearing regarding that specific language. And please correct me if I'm wrong, councilors, but I, I can't support this amendment in good faith.
Council Franco, do you like to respond?
Yes, thank you. I am the child of a Marine who was military police at the sub-base. As I stated, this is not because I did not make this motion, because I think any less of the police or the fire that work at the sub-base, my true intention is to get this I have been married to a firefighter. I have been married and have brother-in-law that was, that is currently still a firefighter. So, it's not that I dislike or have an issue with the sub-base firefighters or police getting this. To the contrary, I am trying to get this passed, and sometimes there are compromises that need to be made. And when I hear from the moderator who came and spoke to us, she stated that the RTM had issues, and one of them, and I've heard from other people since that meeting, it would, the federal employees were a major hang-up that they had issue with. So, somebody that's grown up and lived here my whole life, and having a father who was a Marine and military police officer, and a hundred percent disabled, trust me, I care about the military as well. Thank you.
Council Cassiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we already sent this ordinance to the RTM, and the majority of them have spoken. There are a couple that have indicated that they wanted to see the federal employees included, but many, many more stated that they were not comfortable with it, and they were really concerned about the fiscal impact. And if you watched the RTM meeting where they vetoed this, and they've just had a Finance Committee meeting, there were some major concerns. Removing the federal employees, we can now go into this ordinance telling our taxpayers there's a burden of $2,000 as of right now. Because as I stated in the ordinance from last time, from last week, with the circuit-breaker percentage increase, we should be able to go to our constituents and tell them what the burden will be, and not overburden our town staff. Now, I knew that I wanted to support this ordinance from the start, because I know the sacrifice to be a law enforcement family. So I came prepared that very first night, and I was able to present statistics of Connecticut line-of-duty police and fire deaths. If councilors really wanted to support the addition of adding federal employees, then I think it would have been prudent for council members, for RTM members, and for residents and taxpayers to know the burden if federal employees were included. And to be honest, I don't know how to get those stats, so I can't tell the taxpayers what the burden is. There are also way too many questions about federal benefits that military MPs and fire employees receive that we, we don't really have answers for right now. I don't think anyone, and I'm not trying to speak on behalf of other councilors, are trying to say that we don't support these personnel. I, of course, support our military, anyone serving our country or our town, but it is really our responsibility as councilors to know the added burdens on our other taxpayers. We all know my background by now. I have police and fire background, and I have risked my life. But I also immensely respect our RTM and the wishes of the RTM members, who represent particular districts in our town, and who are the fiscal arm and the checks and balance to us, of our government, and listen to what they have to say. So I will be supporting the amended motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Parker.
So, Council Cassiri said what I want to say, and I did have concerns about having the federal employees involved because of the benefits. I do know, as an employee of the Police Department, that this would help them a lot, because I don't know if I can probably say this, they don't get taxes, social security taxes taken out because of the type of job they have. The same thing with teachers, or I should say state, through the teachers' union and stuff, which I found out today. So, they don't get that benefit when they, a line-of-duty death. There's, for us civilians, we have our husband or significant other that passes away, there's their social security benefit. So if we could look at it from that perspective, again, I don't agree with having the civilian police officers because of the federal government, because they are two separate entities. And I believe when this first came about, when it was first started, it was only the state of Connecticut. I just don't want us to exceed what up into federal government and then have something go wrong. So I am willing to support the amended motion, because we do not, again, have that information about the federal government employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Westphal. Did you have a hand?
I did, but I took it down. Thank you.
All right. Council Bordelon?
Council Baumgartner's hand's been up. I don't know if that's up from before. He was up before I went.
You're first.
Okay. Again, we're talking about, how many deaths, John, are we pending when this is passed that would be affected by this currently?
I can't, I can't say for civilian. The only one I know of is one.
Right, we have one. And so if a, we're talking about the burden of taxes, and we're talking about somebody's life. And for me, the benefits, when you look at them, just because you're a federal employee, if they die in a house, in a home fighting a fire on town property, we're only abating up to, what, $2,000 and, like, it's not, we're not talking a lot of money here, people, like, folks, like, this is not a lot. So as a council, we passed it through, and the RTM spoke, but many other things have come before the council that had to go back to the RTM. Great example, we took out the surviving section. We, we did make a compromise. If we truly feel strongly about supporting our military, we would send it back as a message to the RTM, letting them know that that's how we feel. I've been openly speaking about my stance on this, but if we truly don't want it to go away, then maybe as councilors, we should be working with the RTM to encourage them to support this. I haven't heard anyone speak at any of the RTM meetings about it, or encouraging them to support it. So I understand that they may have not wanted it in, but maybe we as council didn't sell it well enough, and we, we did make a compromise. So why don't we send it back with the additions that are made, and consider supporting our civilian folks that work to, to keep this town run just as often, as, as well as the local fire department? We're not talking about a ton of people. There's not like there's hundreds in, in the winds waiting to get this abatement, or we hope to never use this. So to talk about a tax burden on, on a life, you know what, I'm willing to give that tax burden for a life of someone who fought a fire to save someone else's life on, on our town property. And taking out the other items that are in there, we, we did make that compromise. So, again, I'm just baffled. I really am. I'm shocked, and I thought by putting it in here, when I added it, was a thoughtful thing to think of the police and the firefighters and the EMTs that live here and own homes here. We're doing it for the city. This, this will, you know, also, right, is that correct, Mayor? This will also abate taxes for the city side, too? Well, the city has their own abatement.
It won't affect the city mill rate. If, if.
Only town, this is only.
Right, so it'll be GLP, everybody else, but no ANC, right, okay. So, I just don't know why we wouldn't do it. It would, it just makes a ton of sense, and...
But ju- just to be clear, it'll affect your town taxes in the city, just not your city portion of taxes in the city?
Yeah, I'm aware of that. Thank you. I, again, don't understand why we're excluding a, a large majority of people that we hope will never have to use this benefit, and as of right now, we know of maybe one. So, we're talking about life, and, and, you know what, if they get a little bit of an extra break on top of the break they're getting, and they fought a fire in our community, and it was one of your loved ones, you'd make sure you'd want that break, and I'm just sad to see it go. Thanks.
Council Baumgartner?
Yes, Council Bordelon hit the nail on the head. You know, this is a program where you would hope no one would utilize it. And unfortunately, if we were, you know, if we were most concerned about costs of this ordinance, we wouldn't, we shouldn't pass it. But we're not passing this ordinance because we're concerned about the cost. We passed this ordinance because we had a president come before us, whose husband passed away in the line of duty, and we certainly hope that no individual in our community who is married to a first responder would ever have to get that call, and/or ever have to utilize this program. And so if we are concerned with the costs, we should not pass this. And as was mentioned, this ordinance has been amended several times to the, at the urging of the RTM. We have made several compromises with the RTM, as we should. They are a partner of ours. Any ordinance that goes before the town council and is ultimately approved by the council must go to the RTM. And so that has written in our town charter, and so I very much respect that process. They are partners, but at what point do we stand for our council as well? At one point, we stand with our councilors, stand with our councilors when they propose good ideas. It is, it was, to exclude sub-base personnel from this ordinance would be excluding key members of our community. It would not reflect the true sense of this ordinance to support all first responders here in Groton. And I, my question to the town manager is, are all police officers who work in Groton, would they be able to benefit, or would their families benefit from this ordinance, should they die in the line of duty?
Yes, as long as they're working, you know, within the town boundaries and own a home here, yes.
That includes state police officers? That includes Yukon police officer?
No, those are not included. The council did not include, especially because the state police doesn't have, like, barracks here or anything. But they were discussed at every time, but the council did not include those.
And that, but it specifically excludes Avery Point police officers?
It lists which ones are included, and those are not listed.
So this ordinance specifically has to state who it does include for being included?
Yes, under the definition, yeah.
Thank you, and wanted to clarify that under, under the record, because we could have also, the way the state statute is written, gone the direction of writing the language in a way that could have, would have been broad-based, could have even very, very well included folks who are police officers or firefighters in surrounding municipalities or elsewhere, but live in Groton, correct?
The council could have did whatever they wanted, yes.
That's right. So there's a lot of ways we can write this ordinance, and it is my belief that each of us have contributed, contributed in our own unique and individual ways, making this document a better document. Council Cassiri, I was so taken aback by your words when we first discussed this ordinance, how powerful they were. Council Franco, as you stated, you know, you are married to a firefighter and understand the sacrifice that firefighters and our first responders make. All of us have our own unique experiences dealing, or working with, or being, having family members of first responders. And it goes without stating that this specific provision was proposed by Council Bordelon, and I think that it is not only one of the best provisions within the document, but it ensures that we treat all of our first responders equally and fairly. And I really do believe it would be a significant mistake, council, if we remove this language from the ordinance after deliberating on this item for so long. We have so many other items to discuss in the months to come, and I think this is a mistake to continue deliberating or debate on this very item. We really need to include this. I cannot state enough. Please reject this amendment.
Thank you. Counselor's time has expired.
Would greatly, I'm sorry, say that again, Mayor Melendez?
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
All right, thank you. Nothing further.
Council Westphal?
Yes, thank you very much. I, too, cannot support this amendment. We, we're partners with the sub-base in a lot of things. Sub-base assists Groton all the time. Mutual aid is always important. They're always there to support us. A lot of their folks live in our town. They're part of our community. They're, you know, the, you know, brothers, daughters, you know, friends. They're people that we are with and that we count on every day in our general lives. And then when they come out and they support our local fire departments to back them up in mutual aid, I just, I can't in good conscience exclude them from this, because they are such an integral part of the Groton community. Thank you.
Thank you. I got a question for the manager. The, the main motion, what is printed right here, how is that different from what we sent to the RTM the first time?
Well, it's the, your new draft is, as I said earlier, it's including the volunteers. That was not in the last version. It's including the civilian population from the sub-base. That was not in the first version. I went to them. And limiting, the first, we added those after, no, sorry, the civilians.
Okay.
The volunteers were new. The cap was new. Originally, there was no cap, and then making it more clear, making it clear that you cannot reapply in the event of divorce. Those are, I think, are the only three major things.
Okay, so we've added volunteers. We've put the cap to, from a hundred percent, changed it to fifty percent, and added a three thousand cap. And...
Divorce?
Oh, yeah. We clarified the, the remarry provision in here. Okay. So my only, my only hang-up with voting against this, this amendment and for the original motion is, I mean, we've added volunteers, so I'm not sure that the cap change is going to get this passed alone. So I, I really do think that if we, if we, if we pass what's written in front of us, that, that it'll just come back again, and we'll be in the same spot. I mean, I, I hear you gotta get, I hear what people are saying, you know, you gotta give it a try or whatever. But we did send it to the RTM. They did comment on it. There was a lot of objection to the civilian firefighters and, and police officers being included, so it seems, I don't know what the word is, but I'm not sure why we would send it back with that included again if, if it got vetoed, which, to be honest, I've never seen happen before. Why would we send it back with the same provision in there, knowing that it, it's already been rejected? I, I want them in there. That's why I supported it the first time. I think it was a great idea. But it's sort of one of those things where it's like, if you want the other, the other first responders to get this benefit, maybe we have to take out that portion, because all included together, it doesn't look like we're going to be able to get it passed. So, I mean, I don't know how I'm going to vote on this yet, honestly. Usually I do, I don't, but I just feel like it, it seems like we've done this. We've had this discussion. We've voted. We passed it. We gave it to the RTM, and, and they rejected it, so, I don't know. I guess we're gonna have to take that for what it is. Are there any other hands? Council Westphal?
Yes, thank you. If I, if I recall, I realize that there was some support for the sub-base personnel to be in this with the RTM. Granted, it was not overwhelming, but as a council, if we are, if we're convinced that this is a good, a, a good item for us to send back to the RTM, perhaps it's on us that we need to lobby our RTM members and try to explain to them, give it back to them again. It's not going to hurt to go through again, and try to convince the, those that don't agree that maybe it is a good idea to keep them in. I know I haven't spoke, I've spoken with a couple of people in the RTM, but not a large amount, but I think maybe I probably do need to speak to them more on this, because I still think that we need to be able to include the sub-base people in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Cassiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Burt, are you aware that any of my line-of-duty death stats were incorrect?
Not that I'm aware of. I will say I reached out to every agency in town, and I got responses from two agencies, so.
Very good. And all of the information that I found can be found on the police and fire memorial pages for the state of Connecticut. Mr. Burt, are you aware of the death rate for line-of-duty deaths for federal police and fire?
I'm not.
Okay. Can we go back and adjust this ordinance later if someone were to do those stats?
Of course, same process.
So we can always come back and revisit this later at a different time?
Correct.
Okay. I think it's really hard to lobby RTM members when no one has done the homework with those statistics. I know that when I was on the RTM, I make my decisions based on facts, so if someone really wants to revisit this in the future, then it would behoove someone to do the, the homework on that. No one will benefit from this ordinance if it doesn't pass the RTM. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Parker?
I make a motion to move the question.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion to move the question by Council Parker, seconded by Council Franco, not debatable, requires six votes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
No.
Abstentions? That carries seven in favor, two opposed, Baumgartner, Bordelon, zero abstaining. The motion is moved. We are first going to vote on Council Franco's amendment, which is the ordinance as written with the removal of the civilian firefighter and police officers that work on the Navy submarine base, and reducing the cap from $3,000 to $2,000. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Council Baumgartner, we're voting on Council Franco's amendment.
And I, I thought we were voting on the, the ordinance as amended.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, we are.
I thought we just had that.
No, no, oh, sorry. We were voting to move the question on the last vote.
Oh, gosh, no.
Okay, okay. Opposed?
And I, can we?
Yep.
We're in the middle of a vote. We're in the middle of a vote.
Are you asking for a roll, a, we'll roll call vote. This is on, this is on Council Franco's amendment. Council Cassiri?
Yes?
Council Bordelon? Council Bordelon?
No.
Okay, Melendez will be a yes. Council Franco?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council McBride?
No.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Westerville?
No.
Council Bumgardner?
No.
Okay. Passes five in favor. Four opposed, Bordelon, McBride, Westerville, Bumgardner, zero abstaining. Thank you. We are at the end of our agenda.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Council...
Second.
Bordelon, seconded by Parker. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimously, nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. We are adjourned at 8:02.